I don't think we should be holding back anything and I think we should allow them to develop the property they want to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shiro Jockey, I'm a woman, 905 East Main, right east of... Roller, I'm not very good at this, but um, he's, he's actually come in and improved the area since he's bought it. Bob let that place go. He didn't shut the sidewalks. He took dumpsters full of junk out of that mini golf course. So he's made so much improvements and I don't see what the problem would be. Like Craig said, that roller ring was so busy on Friday nights and right now, East Main is forty-five miles an hour. I mean, that's traffic. You're gonna have traffic no matter what. And as long as he's gonna continue to improve the property, I don't have a problem with it. And going on the fact that the Methodist Church might bring back their daycare, that's a big might. They haven't had it in years and...
Two years, COVID.
They didn't have much of it before then either. But um, just on the, you know, who else is gonna buy it? Bob had that property on sale for years and years and years. Nobody even wants it. So I say if somebody wants to do something with it and keep it decent, keep the sidewalks clean, keep the trash picked up, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
God love her, I married her. Bar Jockey, 905 East Main. I think it's a wrong application. Number one, all residential area. Uh, I could see other uses for that. And you know, isn't, uh, just like the guy, that's his, we need some improvement, something needs to happen to that property. And maybe he's the guy to make a hand up to someone else, but I don't think the marijuana use is appropriate in the middle of all the residential area. And one of the things that really gets me is you, we have, we have developed a lot of property on the east side of town. Most of which young families. And the pedestrian traffic down High Avery Grove Street. Probably under, over half the people are the kids that are with them, the Looms. Sidewalks would be nice, but there, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic running down, up and down there all the time. So my, my biggest thing is I don't think it's a great application for the property. I'd like to see something else there. Who can do it, spend the money, that, that's another story. Somebody will come along.
Hi, um, my name is Pam Rowley and I live at April 4 East Main, right across the street. Been living there since nineteen eighty-eight and raised nine kids there. And they used to go across to the Grove skating rink and um, I just, I can't see it being used as this type of property. I think our value of our homes are gonna go down. I wish you'd open a Wendy's, actually. I'd be here every day, but I just, I'm not for it.
Jim Hodges, 422 North Jefferson Street. Uh, Mr. Baker came to the city council some six years ago, somewhere in that time, uh, to first propose a medical marijuana facility. And uh, that almost made it, but it didn't. And uh, we've had quite some discussions over, over the years about uh, what could happen. And I would assume that medical marijuana, CBDs, uh, would be included in his business rather than just the THC that everybody gets excited about in terms of the high and the kind of traffic that it might uh, incur. But I'd also say, observe the other marijuana facilities that we already have that are open. Uh, how quiet and well-run that they are, uh, how well landscaped they are, how much they've improved the properties and the property values of our community. I think it's helped the community a great deal. Uh, further, I was, uh, I'm a member of Rotary Club and Rotary Club, I'm gonna get there, uh, has a highway cleanup that's done every couple of months. And a couple of months ago, uh, our lead person who was dropping off uh, supplies for us to do the cleanup, did so right in front of Loom. And before he could even get back in his car, the Loom security officer was out there asking him what he was doing. And of course, once he explains, everything's cool and so forth. But the point is, there's security guards. And these folks make sure that everything's on the up and up and everything's operating very smoothly. Anybody has a flat tire, it's part of the best place to have a flat tire, they'll be taken care of. Uh, these places are really a, a, a benefit to our community in the things that they've come to offer for us. Better taxes, better landscaping, uh, better site development. And uh, I, I think something on the east side uh, is certainly all right. Uh, it's not too far from where I live, although some of you live much, much closer. But I'm not opposed to this. I think it might be a very good thing for our community.
Patrick J Bailey, eight two three Avery Street. Um, yeah, I'm against this. I live directly behind it. Um, you talk about uh, daycare centers, nullifying this whole thing. Every family is a daycare. Every nuclear family, we got mom, dad, kids, and they walk past my place all the time. If they're not biking, they're walking, they're heading down to the showboat, they're going back home after some event. And uh, so if, if a daycare could stop this, I don't see why two dozen nuclear family daycares can't. We don't need this. We have bus stops directly behind there. Of course, the other places are gonna be orderly and quiet. Who lives by them? To an outside, they were kinda noisy tonight. We're gonna be able to say that, cause we're right there. I know something's gotta go in there, but this, this is not, this is not what we're looking for, right there. I wouldn't mind the guy doing it down on the western. You know, what's, what's a thirteenth one? What do we care? You know, I think Grand Rapids will turn this into the next ghetto because they'll be running back and forth. The tax money will go into M twenty-one, cause it'll get so beat up from the traffic. But uh, yeah, I don't think we need this. I, I didn't hear any discussion of where snow, uh, snowplow, snow removal would be studied. If you've seen it in the past, it's been piled up in front of my house. Uh, that would take away a few more parking spots. This used to be a school. It used to be a high-end school system right down through there. Uh, you could turn this into a daycare if the church next door isn't gonna do it. This place can be a great daycare. We have buses through there, we have families, we have a church nearby. Doesn't sound like a place where you want to put this in. Thank you.
My name's Amy Cubel, I live at nine one nine East Main. And I can agree with all of you. Um, I live right on Main Street, corner of Main and um, yeah, James Street. I deal with traffic every day, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I chose to live there. I don't agree with the speed limit up, because there is families in our neighborhood. I see people walk by every day. Tell my dog to be quiet every ten minutes, because people are walking by every day with their families and kids going down to the ice cream store, the showboat, like you mentioned. And anywhere else that's nearby. I just, and like you stated, we have twelve of these shops here already, either growing or selling. I don't think we need one down here. It's, you know, I just, I don't think we need it. Again, I, I apologize. We're here to speak our mind. But it's, like you stated, it's residential and the businesses are at the other end of town. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, my name's David Deaton. I live at seven twenty-one Avery. Uh, my driveway spills right out into Parish Hill. Um, I bought my house there in December of twenty eighteen. And uh, couldn't get the money out of my pocket fast enough, cause I've got three children and there's a family fund center across the street. Um, that's, that's what we want, you know, I don't, uh, I would not if it was, uh, uh, listen, I'm not against marijuana. I think uh, it's just fine, but it's fine on that end of town. There's nothing like that on this end of town, nothing. Uh, it's all residential. I would just ask you to consider that and uh, and consider in the future, this property never be considered for any kind of marijuana or adult facility in, in the midst of a surrounding residential place.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, um, we turn back to the, uh, and I'll temporarily close the public opinion while we do some deliberations here. And then when we get into the next set of standards, we'll do it again, so.
Chair Barker?
Yes.
Would you like me to read the email that I received?
Yes, please. We have a email, correct, Sue?
Yes.
Okay.
Dear Planning Commissioners, I won't be able to attend the meeting tonight, but I wanted to share my concerns about the proposal to establish a marijuana business at the site of the former, former Rollaway Fund Center. While I'm currently a resident of Virginia Township, I have owned the property at seven one seven East Main Street since late nineteen ninety-eight. It was our primary residence for more than fifteen years until our family outgrew the home. My long-term tenants are getting ready to leave and my daughter will be moving back into the house. I'm glad that she will be using it, because I am not sure how much luck I would have in attracting new tenants with a marijuana store two, two doors down. In fact, a marijuana establishment two doors down will probably make it difficult for all of us in the neighborhood to sell our homes if and when we want to. According to a survey from the insurance website, The Zebra, fifty-four percent of people won't buy a home within one mile of a marijuana dispensary. Those of us who own homes on Main Street already have the deck stacked against us when it comes to property values and home sales. Realtor dot com notes that a busy road can reduce a property's home, a home's value by up to twenty percent. You can't do anything about a busy road, but putting a marijuana dispensary in the neighborhood isn't doing any of us any favors. Some of the city seems giddy at the prospect of a new renovated commercial building bringing in more property taxes. However, it would be nice if us longtime city taxpayers could get the same consideration as the out-of-town business owners. Two separate studies measured negative outcomes in neighborhoods around marijuana establishments. A twenty twenty-one report published in Regional Science and Urban Economics found a significant increase in nuisance crime in Washington State neighborhoods around marijuana dispensaries. What's more, sale prices of homes within six blocks have dropped three to four percent. Some may say that we haven't seen an increase in crime from our current marijuana establishments, but none of these are located in a residential neighborhood either. Meanwhile, a three-year study of data from Denver and published in the Journal of Primary Prevention found marijuana dispensaries were associated with a similar level of property crime as alcohol establishments. That would be one thousand five hundred seventy-nine property crimes over a thirty-month period for marijuana establishments compared to one thousand five hundred and twenty-one property crimes for combined alcohol outlets. Now, I know people will point out that we have lots of places to buy alcohol in Lowell, but I don't believe any of them are surrounded by homes. It's my understanding that Rollaway had a liquor license, but it certainly did not operate as a bar. Before we bought our Main Street home, we specifically checked to see if Kaiser's Kitchen sold alcohol, because we did not wanna live near a bar. The Rollaway building is a great historic site and it's a shame that it's become so rundown. But I don't think a marijuana establishment is the right fit for this property. There is no way to screen the businesses from neighbors and while I realize that no one should be using marijuana in public, I have smelled enough marijuana wafting over from Med's Cafe overflow lot to know that not everyone waits until they are home to smoke. I realize the planning commission feels its hands are tied on these applications, but before making a decision, I would request the commission seek clarity from the city attorney on the following. Can the commission deny a marijuana application and if so, on what grounds? If the commission cannot deny an application, can it put restrictions on the business? To that second point, I would like to recommend that at the very least, hours be restricted on Sundays. Perhaps things have changed since I moved away, but I always remember Sunday afternoons as the one time when you could almost forget you lived on a state highway since traffic died down, Kaiser's closed early and a business at Rollaway was sporadic. It would be a shame to lose that one period of peacefulness. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter and consider my concerns. Sincerely, Mary O'Leary and LaPonzi, seven seventy-five Aldenash.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, Commissioners, any other thoughts on the uh, site plan, uh, or, yeah, site plan review standards A through F?
I just got one question. We have a, an attorney from Dickinson Wright and I would like clarification for what she asked.
Chair, uh, my name's David Lee Comforhee from Dickinson Wright, upper city attorney for the city. So process here is a special land use. So in this district, it's not prohibited outright. It's a C three district. Uh, but the zoning ordinance calls for this to be special land use, which means you can either approve, approve with conditions or deny the application. So um, uh, you just have to support your decision with competent material substantial evidence on the record, which is what, what it looks for. But otherwise, um, you know, you're going through your special land use standards and your site plan review standards, uh, you can find that they either are met or not met, as long as you support that with evidence uh, that may either dictate denial or uh, or an approval with conditions that help out some of those areas that are, um, you find still deleterious to the surrounding neighborhood.
Anybody else? Then I will, uh, I will make a motion to deny the application of high, high wellness LLC for the site plan review portion of it. And uh, the reasoning behind that would be the site plan review fails to meet the standards as outlined in section eighteen oh six, specifically standards A, B, C, D, and F. Do I have a second for that motion?
One second.
And discussion. Uh, seeing no discussion, Sue, will you do a roll call vote to deny the application?
Yes, let's say Ellis seconded it.
And would you, Sue, would you please read back the motion for me?
To deny the site plan review based upon not meeting the criteria A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Not E, no E?
No E, okay.
And please include high, high wellness LLC. As mentioned in there.
Hey, Mr. Chair, are you incorporating also staff's comments into the record as far as your reasons for finding that the site plan review standards are not met?
Uh, so, submit, sure. We generally just include it as part of the motion, but yes, I will submit to that. Commissioners, is that okay with you? Amendment done? Sue, voice vote then?
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Godula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Having, having gone through the site plan review standards A through F, we will now go through the special land use review standards based on recommendation council. Andy?
Okay, so the next set of standards to go through, um, so we just went through the site plan review standards. We do the same thing for special land use review standards. So these are strictly, uh, these are the general standards that apply to all special land uses in the city, no matter what they are. And then the last part that we'll go through are standards that relate specifically to marijuana establishments.
Andy, uh, after the, um, excuse me, but after the special land use review standards, uh, those are A through F as they were the, uh, the first ones. So, uh, after A through F, we will follow a similar procedure where we'll have the Commissioners ask questions and then we will have public comments at that point as well.
Clear.
Okay?
So special, so this is section seventeen point oh three, subsection A. Means the proposed special land use shall be designed, instructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. The special use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. Um, our comments here in our staff report were that the, uh, they're using an existing building, so the design and construction were presumably at one time accepted for the area. However, the building is vacated and the maintenance of the building site has declined. Landscaping was a bit overgrown in the mini golf area. Um, certainly improvements are, are proposed, but we have not seen building elevations or any proposed landscaping to the extent of exterior, oh, you know, sorry, so the extent of exterior improvements is unclear at this time. As a general note, we also say here that there would be a considerable difference between the intensity of the proposed use surrounding residences, which may increase the impacts perceived by adjacent properties. Uh, the existing land use pattern is residential, pedestrian-oriented and of a resident, of a relatively low intensity. Uh, the C three district is only on three properties, east of the river, as I mentioned earlier. Um, and while that, while C three certainly allows more intense uses than the surrounding residential districts, that impact should be carefully considered within its surrounding residential context. Uh, we add that adult-use marijuana has typically associated with higher intensity land use impacts, such as traffic water potentials and so forth, uh, that may not be harmonious or appropriate in such a predominantly residential area. And the planning commission should carefully consider whether this would be harmonious with the character of the existing area. Fastly, landscape buffers are often used to help mitigate the impacts of a more intense commercial use on the residence, on the less intense residential use. Um, at this time, the applicant has not proposed landscaping or buffers, um, on either of the parcels. And given the geometry of the site, landscaping, screening, to, to a degree that sufficiently familiarizes its impacts on neighboring properties, it may be difficult to achieve, which we talked about earlier. It is also surrounded by streets of residential districts on all sides, making it impractical to require buffer on every site, even if we're feasible. And so we conclude this by saying that we have serious concern about whether the proposed use would be compatible with the existing and intended character of the general vicinity and if it would remain appropriate in this context, given the lack of landscaping and its proximity to residential uses. Uh, item B, the master, so this standard says that the proposed, the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the city's master plan. Uh, we talked about the, talked about that a little bit above. Um, and in the master plan on the future land use map, there's properties in that used future land use category. Um, that category, you know, allows for a, a mix of, you know, office, commercial, residential uses, not necessarily like downtown-style development, but intent there is to offer some flexibility. Um, you know, certainly there are, you know, again, some of the same, um, comments come up with respect to, uh, the master plan we talked about earlier. So, you know, if there's a existing building, um, if it was a new building, we might be having a different conversation. But you know, in terms of the land use, um, you know, other, other facilities that you, that we've discussed, I think have shown, you know, have been in that same excuse, future land use category. So Avery Killer in and of itself, um, I don't know that is, that it is inconsistent, but some of those same comments about, about screening and landscaping and buffering and pedestrian activity and things like that, I think are warranted here. Um, the third standard, the proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services, such as highways, streets, police, fire, drainage structures, curbs, disposal, water, and sewer facilities. Because it's an existing building, there should be already utility connections on the site. Yeah, we're not proposing any major changes to the parking lot, so drainage structures are expected to remain adequate, however drainage isn't shown on the site plan. So obviously, the planning commission can ask for a more detailed plan or ask for comments from the city engineer with respect to drainage. Emergency vehicle access appears to be at put on the site, given there are streets surrounding the entire property plus parking. Um, but again, we typically just refer to the fire department in those, those conversations. We talked about, in the site plan standards, the curb cuts. So there's four curb cuts, you know, on, on, on the site that may cause some concern with respect to traffic circulation on streets. Um, cause there's roads on all sides, or at least three of them, if you don't count eight twenty-five. Points of interest, because should be carefully considered to ensure safe maintenance and accident vehicles on the site. Marijuana establishments have typically been associated with high levels of traffic on other commercial establishments, as you know, past planning commission practice, for the most part has been to require people to at least have the minimum on-site. And then if you need, you know, in a couple instances, you've asked for more off-site. Here they have five more than the minimum on property that's either on the site or on the very adjacent property that they control on eight twenty-five. Um, certainly, security measures are expected, are expected to mitigate impacts on the police department. And there's a, you know, fee for the operating license that would also help offset some of those administrative costs that the city incurs. Indeed, the proposed special land use will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Uh, facilities and services, including water and sewer are present in the site. Um, doesn't involve any growing required, uh, services, ground, typical retail operations, so that standard is likely satisfied. Item E, the proposed special land use will not abide, shall not follow uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that would be detrimental to a person's property or the general, general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, clutter, or odors. Um, you know, we were a little, the, the narrative for this project was a little light compared to some of the applications we've seen previously, as you probably noticed. Um, they did submit some, some initial information recently. Uh, you know, however, you know, I think it's important for the planning commission to kind of determine the extent to which noise and traffic specifically may be present on the site and let that impact is gonna be on adjoining neighboring residential uses. And this kind of goes back to the fact that this is surrounded on basically all four sides by residential properties. Noise and traffic may have a greater impact in this area due to the presence of residences surrounding the subject property. And without an appropriate buffer or landscaping, noise and traffic may, may, may really impact the surrounding residential uses. And so again, subject to any discussion of how those may be mitigated or conditions that would address that, those things should certainly impact your, your, your decision. Then F, the proposed special land use shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements and copies of all applicable permits shall be submitted to the city. And if approved, that would be addressed as a condition of approval. A lot of those permits don't get obtained until following a planning commission approval, whether it's from the Dodge or the city county or others. So, uh, those are the six special land use review criteria. Uh, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioners, any questions, thoughts before we open it to the general public?
I have a thought, I have a letter, or letter E, the loading doctor, that's what I may concern. I have all that empty space. I don't think where it's designed or where it's proposed is very good and really safe. And uh, it not, I'm sorry, safe, maybe good for operations due to the presidential looking across the street. You have half that building, they could have engineered it so that it would be closed. I think that would have been a better way to go, unless affecting the surrounding residents. That's just my concern, the letter E there.
E? Any other Commissioners thoughts?
I usually, I can't remember if there was a sidewalk back there or something, just, you know, there's no sidewalk back there.
I have a picture of it if you'd like to see. It's just a match ball.
Yep.
Any other thoughts, commissioners? Okay, general public, uh, if anybody would like to speak, again, same rules apply, please be brief, uh, give us your name and address.
Our John Keenan, I'll try these man. I'm sorry for my commentary, we're actually more about special land use instead of the site plan, but that is pretty much all for the same condition. Just consider carefully how many things would have to be ignored, allowed, modified. When you go down the list of all the things that may be changed or accepted the way they are, uh, to make an approval, this discussion was really not for site plan, but it, it applies the same thing. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else from the general public?
Patrick Bailey, eight two three Avery Street, directly behind the Middletown Golf Park. What was promised on the previous, uh, plan with the Middletown Golf Course, they allowed them not to put in a sidewalk on that north side, and said if there was any changes, they were going to police him if he didn't show profit, it would have to be bulldozed, and any changes done to that property on that side, the north side, would have to include sidewalk, which they didn't allow to go in, and there was a big feud about who let that happen and why did it happen, because it should have a sidewalk and was let go because of the space needed for the Middletown Golf Course. So I think, uh, that should be considered too. We're changing the plan, we're getting rid of the golf course, uh, sidewalk on that north side should be considered. Right now, everybody walks down the street. And, uh, I mentioned snow removal, but I don't see a spot, oh, I guess there is a spot for dumpster, okay, because that was always a problem too, everything blowing from the, uh, west to the east, end up in the, uh, Clark's Yard, he'd be cleaning up every other week, just stuff from that, uh, business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to, uh, speak? Hearing none, I'll close this portion of it, and again, we'll follow the same format for the next portion. But commissioners, any, uh, any other thoughts?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to give an opportunity for the applicant again to address anything they, they wish to at this time?
Um, sure. They're part of the general public at this point, so, yes.
Um, as far as the security-
Do you step up to the mic too, so those are recording and everything? Thank you.
Um, I do think it's noteworthy that this was a bar that did operate late into the night. Um, I know that when I, when I did my survey, there was somebody that had discussed that, that they didn't want the open late into the night, and I assured them that, hey, you know, uh, it could be open no later than nine, and they were, they were satisfied with that as far as it goes for noise and traffic and lights coming out of the, the parking lot shining into their windows late in the, late into the night, um, as well, as well as the noise from the bar, uh, people drinking and then going outside and chatting, being rowdy and whatnot. Also, as far as, um, the, the, the site goes, uh, it was not purchased until after it was discussed with the city manager that the property itself is in fact eligible and that there wouldn't be a problem with the property itself. As far as my application in general, I feel like that's definitely up for discussion. But as far as before I purchased the property, it was told to me by the city manager that it was in fact an eligible property. Um, as, and, uh, another point that I, I think should be made was I did input this, uh, application for eight oh five. It says in here that both properties are integral parts of marijuana use, which I would say is in fact false, because, I mean, the parking is going to be used, but the, for eight oh five, air, eight twenty-five, no actual use or storage or anything for the actual marijuana would be taking place. Therefore, I don't believe that it would be a property that would be one commercial, or two commercial lots that's completely surrounded by residential, it would be one commercial lot that has commercial property to the right that I would then be leasing to my building, like you guys have done in the past, you asked for additional parking spaces from, uh, for a couple of applicants. So it would be my business Hyde Wellness is only leasing eight oh five, and then I would have an additional agreement with Hyde Wellness for additional parking spaces on eight twenty-five. So therefore, it is not completely surrounded by residential, it is residential on, I guess, three sides and commercial on one. And as far as, uh, the secure delivery area, the curb is, is cut from pretty much the corner to about a hundred feet back to the east. Yep. That's on the agenda?
Thank you. Again, commissioners, any thoughts? Any further thoughts?
Can I ask something?
Um, sure.
Okay. Hey, Rowley, you know, for me, I have a question.
If you could just direct your, if you could just direct your, direct comments to, to the chair and then it-
Okay, I was just gonna, I wanted to, um, uh, for these type of businesses, do they just deal with cash?
No.
No.
So you- You can, you can accept credit cards as well.
Okay, I was, I just had that question.
Okay, sure. Commissioners, any thoughts? And seeing none, I will move to deny the application for special land use of Hyde, Hyde Wellness LLC, uh, for the, uh, special land use review standards, uh, specifically standards A, B, C, and E, as well as the, uh, public discussion and Andy, uh, for one was worse, uh, his comments. Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
And is there a further discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You might want to just, um, well, two, two things. One, if you want to have some discussion around the exact reasons, you know, that justify your decision for each of the letters, I think that would be helpful, one. And then two, there was a lot of good discussion here tonight about the reasons why, um, so I have, when you get to the end of a motion, um, and I don't forget the end of it now, but, um, I would suggest some language that would allow the secretary of the planning commission to develop some findings and conclusions with the help of the city attorney and city planner, to bring it back to you next meeting, um, to either adopt or not adopt is accurate or not, uh, just so that you have a, a nice summary and consensus for the reasoning, reasoning for your decision.
Okay, I would, I, in, in answer to your question, I'm, I'm fine with that, except for we have talked about it, we have discussed it, and we've noted the standards that Andy talked about, everybody's had a discussion on it. So I think you can draw your, your conclusions from there, frankly. I'm not, not trying to disregard others' opinions, but, uh, in this particular case, I think we've already talked about it enough, frankly. And we will continue to, uh, go because we've got another whole session to do here on adult marijuana, uh, regulations. We'll finish that, go through the same process, and then we'll take the final vote, and then we can resolve the issue about coming back next month with, uh, to finalize it.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because if, if it doesn't exist on the record, if you did, if it's not set out loud on the record, then a court won't know that it existed. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when, when the secretary of this body develops the findings, that they're clear about what it was. I heard landscaping, parking, uh, adjacent residential use, detrimental traffic circulation, noise, um, three or four sides of being adjacent residential, um, and the, and the traffic, the traffic impacts on that. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I think the, uh, one of them, well, in the first, uh, section was the general welfare of the, of that community, and I think that's-
The, the impact of marijuana use on particularly residential zones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that E, uh, in this section is, again, it's the general welfare. I think that's probably why I group, well, I'm not going to say it, but that's why I agree with the E though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sue, voice vote then, please.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Godula?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Our next, uh, our next section is adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards. Uh, and here we have B through, um, M, so there's a number of them, B through M. Um, and Andy, you want to walk us through, please?
So the first two sections that we went through, those were general standards that apply to all site plans for all special land uses in any district. B standards that we'll go through now apply only to adult use marijuana standards, they're a little more specific in terms of, 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 of the use here. Item A in the subsection isn't included because it's just introductory, it's not regulatory language. Um, item B talks about separation distances, which we've, uh, spent some time talking about tonight. Um, there are presently no schools or childcare facilities within a thousand feet of their proposed location, and, uh, no new childcare centers registered with, uh, the, uh, with LARA. Under C, orders, uh, the capital plan notes that the H vac equipment would be designed for any refreshments on the building to prevent orders, along with added charcoal filter system. Uh, the ratio wasn't, uh, included, but, um, and again, if there are additional details with respect to carbon infiltration, those could be discussed with the applicant if deemed necessary, um, such as if they would be in every room or, you know, how that exactly is going to break down. Item D, uh, talks about the establishment being operated and maintained so that any byproducts or waste are properly and lawfully kept and disposed of, so as to preclude any risks to be harmful to public landscape or welfare. Applicant has proposed dispose of the marijuana waste with a cat litter, uh, at a ratio of fifty fifty. Um, there's a dumpster in the locked area in the back, which we talked about a little bit, which is also surrounded by an eight foot tall fence. Um, in section, or actually in the administrative rules for twenty dot two eleven, it lists out, these are the, uh, the LARA's administrative rules with respect to adult use marijuana, it lists out, uh, the, uh, the things that you can combine with marijuana in terms of disposal, and it gives a bunch of examples, there are cat litter that are listed specifically as, as one of those. So they'd have to either, you know, go with something else, or I think there is a mechanism in there for, you know, LARA to give permission to use a different, you know, substance to mix it with. Um, under item E, it says the establishment should not be operated out of a residence or any building fully, used wholly or partially for residential purposes. Uh, that presently is the case, there are no residences, my knowledge, on or proposed for that property. Um, item F talks about, uh, any portion of the structure or energy uses and heat could exceed a typical residential use, such as growing, et cetera, that does not apply here. Um, F would, uh, preclude them from selling alcohol or tobacco, and nothing on the site plan that would suggest that. H prohibits drive-throughs, which are not proposed. Um, I just think that it shall comply at all, at all times and at all circumstances with the Michigan Relation Taxation of Marijuana Act and the rules promulgated by LARA, which would be addressed as a condition of approval if it were approved. Uh, item J, the planning commission may require additional landscaping, that's an enabling type of standard there. Um, they have not proposed any, again, if the planning commission, you know, were to approve it, then that's something that you would be enabled, but not required to address. Under item K, uh, owner and, and or licensee shall maintain clear, adequate records and documentation demonstrating that all cannabis and products have been obtained from and provided to other permitted and licensed operation. Uh, the city shall have the right to examine, monitor, audit records. The applicant is proposing to use a variety of different methods, has permitted random record evaluations and availability of records to the state and the city. Um, you know, they talked about using metric, which is the statewide system. Um, there's a little, I think just a typo in there of why that seems to be okay, and then they've also submitted some supplemental material to that effect as well. Uh, the last couple of standards requires that they obtain all of their permits, um, but since there is no growing or harvesting which would be taking place, though that doesn't apply. And M is a general preemption standard where if this, the city, um, is preempted by, by the, the act or the rules, then that would take, that would, you know, rules would, the rules then would control, and that would be also addressed as a condition of approval if it were to be approved. And then the rest of my report here, um, is a, a bunch of conclusions, so, you know, we don't have to go over this now, but-
Let's hold off on that.
-through some items listed there.
Uh, commissioners, any thoughts on the, um, adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards?
Just one, the, uh, clarify, can you please, the five hundred feet of property within the C two, was that, when we did that originally, was that from residential?
No, so, when we talk about C two, there are a handful of isolation radii that come into play here. Um, one is that you can't be within, um, a thousand feet of a preschool or childcare center, um, to be like the, having to do the, the commercial for rights, not like a family daycare, which is, that's, 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 so that's one. Two is that it can't be within a thousand feet of a public or private K two twelve, and the third one is it can't be within five hundred feet of any property in the central business district, so there's the big five hundred foot isolation radius around the main downtown core, so, so we looked at that. Um, and if you recall, we also have in the city, there's about four blocks to the east of downtown, we, we have that mixed use designation, so they're outside of that five hundred foot isolation radius as well.
Just, I couldn't quite remember that five hundred, so thank you.
Yep, yep. A lot of that had to do with the area west of it.
Right.
Most of it.
Yeah. But that was quite the reason.
Correct. Any other?
I just, I would comment that the, the public statement earlier, uh, you know, a nuclear family having as much value as a public daycare center is like a pretty valid point. I know it doesn't necessarily factor into the public list, listed here, but, you know, part of the intent there is that schools and, and places where kids who aren't choosing to be, you know, um, and parents who aren't choosing to have their kids exposed to, uh, those kind of facilities are, are, you know, not forced into that situation. You could make the argument that these are residences and that they're free to come and go, but these are people who already live in the spot.